Thank you everyone for being here to bring tonight's meeting of city council order. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion being second. Any discussion? Hearing none. To the motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations. Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The East Bethel Chamber of Commerce will present an overview of the chamber's goals and accomplishments, discuss the roles of the chamber and the city as partners in advancing business opportunities, and express their comments and concerns regarding the relationship of local businesses with the city. Brad Slosson, President of the East Bethel Chamber of Commerce, will make the presentation and introduce other members of that board to speak with their interactions with the city. Brad, thank you for coming.
Good evening. You know, before I start with the Chamber of Commerce report, nine years ago, I opened my restaurant here, Route sixty-five Pub and Grub. And I sat in the audience, and I had this wow factor. Because the first topic on the agenda was removing the mayor because he didn't live in the city of East Bethel. And the sheriff had to walk up to the dais and remove the mayor. And I, as I sat there, I thought, do I, am I going to be part of this? And it was approved, and I'm sure since it's been approved, you've had the wow factor of, wow, we approved that guy a license. So I think we've came a long ways. It's been good, and I obviously appreciate the opportunity to have a business here, and since then, we now have two with Route sixty-five discount liquors. So tonight was another wow factor for me here at the city council. I guess there's always some excitement here. I'm Brad Slosson, President of the Chamber of Commerce here in East Bethel. Thank you, Jack, for the invitation today. And I talked about being here today with a speech prepared and read line by line. And I think that's exactly what I don't want. We want to talk. We want to have open communications from our chamber to the council, to the mayor, council members, to Jack. And to date, that's what I've experienced personally. If I needed something, if I had a question, I picked up the phone and I got an answer. Not always did I like that answer, but I know that you have a job to do and a role to play. But the answer was there. If I didn't like the answer, then people have things that they can do, right? There's elections, they can join a chamber, they can have a larger voice, and that's why we're here today. We want to get along with the mayor, the council members. Our sunrise breakfast that we host for the Chamber of Commerce is our most well-attended meeting that we have every year. And why is that? Because the chamber business owners want to hear from the city. They want to hear your updates. They want to hear what's happening, and they want to be part of that progress. So we're happy that we're here. I wanted to have one more person than you had. So I brought a few extra friends today. But so that's why we're here today. With me, Wes Mack, our treasurer, is here. Randy Chumley is here on the board. Candy Weisenberger is here on the board, and Wanda McLean is here from our board as well. All volunteers on the Chamber of Commerce. We have an awesome chamber. We have eighty-six members currently. We're always on the roll. We're always looking for new people that we can sit down and talk to and express our interest to them as why they should join the chamber, and we've been effective at that. Clearly, a lot of our new membership comes from you. As people apply for permits and business expansions, we go knocking on their door, and here they are, part of our chamber. So I like to think that we're on the same team. I like the approach that we've had, and I like to keep that approach going. Sometimes when business owners that aren't attending meetings and aren't involved in their chamber as much as they should or don't see these types of interactions receive a letter from the attorney's office. Could be a boilerplate kind of a letter, but your attorney, I think, is paid by the work because sometimes they're lengthy, right? And they're intimidating. So just recently, we had that. Now, we had a chamber member going through some difficult times, called me, I called Jack, we had a meeting, and it took five minutes and all parties left, I think, happy on all of the issues at hand. I think it's as easy as that. So my message today and my ask of you is can we have a more welcoming approach on businesses? We're not the enemy. We provide jobs, we provide tax base, we provide entertainment, services, goods. Now, we are, we all aren't perfect. Business owners make mistakes. Council members make mistakes. But we can talk through those mistakes. But our chamber is a great chamber. Our businesses in the chamber, I think, are second to none. When you have the likes of Aggressive Hydraulics, and Paul's here today, and Paul's going to talk. Don Quetin, he's here today, runs a great bank. He's in our chamber. You have Classic Construction. I think they built the city. I think it's endless. So then we're the walks of life in our chamber. And the future walks of lives are going to be in front of you someday, asking for a permit, asking to expand, asking to put a warehouse here. And just please have a welcoming approach to that, as I was. I was welcomed here. I heard stories. I heard that they don't like the businesses. I personally haven't experienced that. Now, the board has changed over the years, elections and so have it. So for those new members on the council, just know, we're on the same team. We're not the enemy. We're not perfect, but we're not the enemy. So moving forward, of course, I'm always a phone call away. Jack, if you hear something with someone in the chamber, call me. Let's sit down and talk about it. Likewise, if we have an issue from one of our business owners, let's sit down and work it out. It doesn't have to be on cable news, right? We can sit down and work these things out, I think, in a fair manner for all of us. So moving forward, we want to help keep this a great city to work in, a great city to live in. That's our mission. That's our goal, and that's what we want to keep on doing. Paul Johnson's here today, wants to give a few words as well. Come on up, Paul. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Paul Johnson, founder and president of Aggressive Hydraulics. Now, I'm sorry, Brad, but I, mine's prepared. So basically, what I'd like to do is I appreciate what the chamber does. I'm proud to say our company is a charter member of the chamber. And their volunteer time, and Brad's a great steward and a hard-working guy, a wonderful businessperson and so on. So what I'd like to do is do a little deeper dive on the introduction of Aggressive Hydraulics and a little bit maybe more about who we are, why we came here, and our contribution to the city. So I didn't want to leave anything out, so I have it all written here. I'd like to introduce you to Aggressive Hydraulics, our sixty thousand square foot facility located just north of the East Bethel Movie Theater. Last month, we celebrated our nineteenth year in business. We design and manufacture custom hydraulic cylinders used on machinery and equipment for a wide variety of industries and applications. We have customers in every state, and our products are being used throughout the world on every continent. We have the reputation throughout our entire industry of being able to solve the toughest problems and applications by working harder and creating better solutions for the industry than our peers do. I'm proud that we, of what our seventy-four full-time employees do. Our employees, our employee count has increased by thirty people since making the decision to build our new facility here in East Bethel. We moved here from Blaine into our new facility in the spring of two thousand thirteen, and were the first business to connect to the city sewer and water. What you may not know is that most of the seven owners not only currently live in East Bethel, we were raised here and graduated from St. Francis High School. I've been here since nineteen sixty-five, and that's not when I was born, by the way. And I've watched a lot of changes during this period of time. For Aggressive Hydraulics, moving to East Bethel was really more like coming home. Thirteen of our employees are residents of East Bethel, and most of the remaining employees live in municipalities immediately adjacent to East Bethel. We love working in the same community in which we and our families live. Many prominent and established businesses in this community are also owned and staffed by East Bethel residents, who also grew up here. Businesses create jobs and are an essential facet to our community. Although we have experienced three distinct economic downturns during our existence, we have never laid off employees. We don't see it as having seventy-four employees. We have seventy-four families working for us. The following is a few high-level current state employment and financial statistics to help demonstrate the positive monetary impact of a company like ours to our community and local economy. Our multimillion-dollar facility and our multimillion-dollar expansion taking place utilizes the services of East Bethel's classic construction. We utilize the services of local businesses for building maintenance, lawn care, snow removal, MRO supply for consumable tooling and supplies, catering for employee events, monthly lunches, and so on. Since moving our business to East Bethel, we have invested three point eight million dollars in additional equipment utilizing regional banking. We have earmarked one million dollars in equipment purchases in the next twelve months. And Aggressive Hydraulics spends four point four million dollars annually on employee wages. We have seven owners all employed with Aggressive, and none of us are in the top fifteen wage earners of the company. We spend an additional nine hundred ninety-four thousand annually in healthcare premiums for our employees and dependents. We spend one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually in employee 401K contributions, and currently, our property taxes are one hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. I want to thank city staff and elected members of council for their support in creating an environment which made it possible for Aggressive Hydraulics to move here. If it weren't for that, we wouldn't be here. One thing I remember telling city staff, was Jack and Stephanie, that when we were figuring out where we were going to move during that selection process, I shared that I wanted to and would be good stewards of the community. Beyond helping to lower the tax burden for the residents of the city, businesses play a vital part in helping shape our community. I'm proud to say Aggressive Hydraulics has given back to numerous national and local causes. And the following is a list of the few of the regional opportunities in which we donate or contribute resources toward: St. Francis Boys Hockey, NACE Food Shelf, Girls Youth Hockey, Cedar Creek Elementary School, Booster Days, Beaver Book Sportsman Club, Youth Robotics Booster Club, Cambia Hills, East Bethel Fire Relief Association, East Bethel Scholarship Program, St. Francis All Night Party, Boys Little League. And we provided open houses and tours and presentations on vocational opportunities for North Metro High Schools during Manufacturing Month every October. We open, have opened up our internal onsite night classes for technical training to the community free of charge. Our controller serves as treasurer of the chamber. Our vice president of operations serves on the Inoka Technical College Trade Program Advisory Board. I serve on the Inoka County Workforce Development Board, and I'm also a director at one of our community banks, Village Bank. I hope learning more about our company and our ties and commitment to the city have been informative and beneficial for those listening. I'm proud both personally as well as professionally to say I am from East Bethel. I'm asking city staff and elected members of council to continue working on being friendly to our existing businesses as well as to those who are considering moving here. It is not about how big we can be, but about how good we can be for the residents as well as the businesses of this wonderful community. Like what I tell our employees, when we work together, our best days are always ahead of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Does that complete your presentation? Well, thank you for being here. It's been a while since the chamber's come before council, and I think that's something that, you know, like you said, it doesn't have to be once a year. You know, through our meetings and several of the council members, you know, attend, you know, board or chamber board meetings quite often too. So thanks, thank you again. Thank you both for being here, Don for being here. You know, these three businesses are probably in the theater, probably ones that focus, people focus more around the city. So again, thanks for being here. Any questions or comments from council?
I frankly would believe that if the chamber wanted to come more than once a year and talk or give an update, whatever they want, come. Get on the agenda. I want to hear. I've lived most of my life in East Bethel, grew up here, and returned here in two thousand seven. I work in the city. I can see both perspectives on a business in the city, the needs of a business in the city, and as a resident. So a lot of the things that you talked on, that you touched today during your speeches, I fully understand. So I just want to thank you for being in front of us and supporting the city, the residents, and inviting us to the sunrise business breakfasts that gives us an opportunity to talk to the businesses. So, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you again. Okay, next on our agenda, M4B, Potentially Dangerous Dog Hearing, eight four four two hundred twenty-eighth Avenue. Jack?
This agenda item refers to a potentially dangerous dog declaration. The council's request is determined by hearing if a potentially dangerous dog determination by the Inoka County Sheriff's Office issued to Brandon Whistler should be sustained, modified, or removed. The request for the hearing relates to an incident that occurred on July seventh, two thousand twenty-one. The Inoka County Sheriff's Office reported that a dog owned by Mr. Whistler injured or killed domesticated chickens owned by Mr. Washi on his property at eight forty-four two hundred twenty-ninth Avenue. Mr. Whistler's dog was not licensed at the time of the incident and does not have a current license or proof of current rabies vaccination as of August twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The owner has submitted a written request to appeal the decision of the potentially dangerous dog declaration. Pursuant to City Code, Chapter ten, Article two, Dog, Section ten seventy-two, an animal owner is allowed to contest the potentially dangerous dog determination. The council pursuant to this section has several options regarding this matter. To conduct the hearing and allow the owner to present reasons why the potentially dangerous dog determination should be removed, if determination is sustained, identify the action to be taken with the dog and the dog owner. If the potentially dangerous dog determination is not sustained, make a determination that the animal is to be released without further action from the city council. This time, staff recommends that city council hold the hearing relating to potentially dangerous dog determination and issue a decision regarding this incident and any requirements for keeping the dog should the declaration be sustained or modified.
Okay, we will open up the potential dangerous dog hearing. For any folks here tonight on this matter that like to speak to council, now is your time. Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Matt Washi, eight forty-four two hundred twenty-ninth Avenue, East Bethel. We were the original complainant on the dog. We'd had multiple visits from this individual's dog in our yard, the last two of which resulted in a wholesale slaughter of our chicken coop. Deputy Sorensen came out the last time, got some pictures from us. He took a couple pictures as well and surveyed the damage from the dog, went and talked to the dog owner, and then asked if we would come and speak on behalf of the citations that he wrote to try and have city council take some action against the owner and the dog. And the dog pretty much runs free at will, and it's programmed now to come back and look. And I've got grandchildren and small dogs of my own and my wife's chicken population as she rebuilds it that we're worried about. So everybody stays in the house until we find out whether or not something can be done about the dog. That's about it. That's all we've got on it. I think we submitted some photos as well.
Yeah, that was sent to all the council members.
Okay. So, yeah, that was our, we're just hoping that some sort of action can be taken so we can actually go back outside in our own yard and enjoy living in East Bethel as rural community.
Okay. Any questions for Matt, those up here?
So this was the second reported time with one incident being unreported for this dog?
This was the third time when Deputy Sorensen came out. It was the third time. The first time was unreported.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Two times reported.
Two times reported.
One unreported.
Unreported. The original incident, I actually went over and spoke with them and got the chicken that the dog had carried home with it. And they assured me they would take care of it. The dog wouldn't be out at large any longer. And then the second and third occasions, Deputy Sorensen was out.
It looks like from, we got a copy of a previous report from July first of this year. When, I assume that's the second of these three we're talking about. When was the first?
That sounds correct, yeah. It would have been about three weeks prior to that.
So all three of these have been in the summer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Matt? All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Any others here tonight on this matter that like to speak to council? If not, we will close the dangerous dog hearing, bring this discussion back to the table. So, Jack, why was the second one not brought to council?
We didn't receive it. Some of these we don't.
July, I'm going to say the July first one.
We didn't receive that report. It was referenced in the final write-up that I noticed today. So that's why I got Shelley. Sometimes we don't receive some of them unless there's a citation or anything done. So I did notice those and read them, and they were relevant to this particular instance, so I forwarded those on to council.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize the second, this last one was a week later, so I'd think about that. Okay.
Yeah, citation was issued both times by the deputy?
I know the citation was issued the second time.
Okay.
When they issue a citation, sometimes we don't get the report. We get the reports when a potentially dangerous dog declaration is made.
Okay. But as far as dog brain rules or anything?
No, we don't normally receive those.
Okay.
Okay. And there's currently no fencing, correct, Matt? Yeah, I think I understood that part. So is there a motion from the table?
Is there any other discussion?
I haven't heard any. Any want more?
I was just going to ask, Jack, now, is he up to date on his rabies and everything?
We have.
Still not up to date?
No. He's, no one's to come by to get the dog license or provide proof of rabies vaccination.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I have a question when we vote on this. If we vote for a potentially dangerous dog with stipulation, we can add the stipulations, but...
Oh, yeah. I mean, and the list that Jack provides, that's...
We don't have to do all of it.
We don't have to use all of it. No, no.
I just wanted to make sure I was...
And they can be removed after a certain period of time, right, Jack?
Oh, potentially dangerous dog, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, I suppose I will make a motion to uphold the potentially dangerous dog requirement. First and foremost, be licensed and proof of vaccinations to the city, and with the following requirements. One, that the owner provide and maintain a proper enclosure. Three, that an easily identifiable standardized tag identifying the dog as potentially dangerous. Five, that if the dog is outside the proper enclosure, the dog must be muzzled and restrained by substantial chain or leash. Six, that all dogs deemed potentially dangerous by the city council be registered within the city within fourteen days. Seven, that the dog must annually be licensed by the city. Eight, that the owner must allow a compliance official on the owner's property to conduct a site inspection within fourteen days.
So just to clarify, seems like the only one... So just clarify, seems like the only, only one?
I'm omitting two and four.
Two and four. Okay, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
My discussion is I don't think we need all of those because once the, all right, so you said muzzled or chained until the enclosure is made, right?
No, if it's out of the enclosure.
Out of the enclosure.
That if it's not within the enclosure, that as long as it's on a leash by a person over the age of eighteen, muzzle, I could go either way with, but at least be in control by a person over eighteen.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's okay. And I think the enclosure and the fourteen days is inspection, is that worthy to make sure the enclosure is there?
That would be my intention to have.
I think that's the intention. Is this to monitor compliance, correct?
Okay, I agree with those three. The rest of them, I don't know if that's really necessary, but.
You, you agree with the enclosure?
With the enclosure, yes.
So what one did you not agree with, I guess?
I, I'm omitting two and four. All the others would apply.
Oh, good. Thanks. I could do much better with paper. I don't think it needs a, really needs a tag because I think this dog is only dangerous to animals it thinks that are running wild. I don't think it's dangerous to people.
Not yet. They're staying in their house. They're afraid to come outside. I'd be, you know, that would concern me a little bit.
Yeah, but they have small kids. I don't know.
I don't think that's too much of an imposition to put a dog tag on.
True. All right, I'm gonna go with it. Yeah, I'm gonna agree with everything.
There can almost be the scenario that the dog has taken all of East Bethel to a visit to a neighboring town. It can be identified that way.
Jack, in terms of compliance, we'll do a compliance check in fourteen days. If there's an issue, you report back to council. Okay. The fencing may take more than fourteen days.
And, and we, we would give them a proper allowance to get that in.
Okay, all right.
And be licensed, I assume that the owner would have to show proof of vaccinations?
That's correct. License is free.
Okay. And the light, being licensed is one of the requirements. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just wanna thank the complainant for actually trying to work it out with the neighbor before making a, bringing it to city council or calling the police. I read the whole thing and I'm sorry that this other person was so uncooperative. That's all.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. I hope, hope things improve. Onto our sheriff's department. Good evening, Commander.
Good evening. I have a short report tonight.
Good.
Keep you on track, time-wise, right?
You get points.
Okay. Custodial arrests since significant events from July of two thousand and twenty-one, and I do read line by line.
You should.
Theft. Deputy Rockets received a call of a theft from Highway sixty-five to Twenty-first Avenue Northeast. Upon contacting the victim, she reported she had two kayaks fall off her vehicle in the area of two Twenty-first and Highway sixty-five. She pulled the kayaks, kayaks off to the shoulder and went to a nearby parking lot to put a kayak rack on her vehicle. Upon returning, the kayaks were gone. The only description is one was blue and one was orange. There's no further information, so if anybody knows, found a couple kayaks on the side of the road, they were actually lost. They weren't just thrown out. Possession of fifth degree controlled substance. Deputy Madsen stopped a vehicle which he knew the driver's license status as canceled and nimical to public safety. The registration on the vehicle showed it was flagged as having been sold to the suspect and the title had not been transferred. Upon stopping the vehicle, the male was detained based upon his driver's license status. Deputy Madsen asked the male who the female passenger was and he provided a name. Deputy Madsen overheard Sergeant Hirschberger asking the female for her name, at which time she provided a different first name than what Deputy Madsen had been told. Deputy Madsen questioned the female and she initially denied the name that the male suspect had given, but did admit to that being her correct name. She did have a warrant for her arrest, so she was taken into custody. There was a glass pipe with white residue sitting in the center console area. A search was performed on the female and a baggie containing a white powdery substance was located. A small amount of marijuana was also found in the vehicle. The female was transported to jail based upon her warrants and the possession of a fifth degree controlled substance. Fraud. Deputy Sorensen received a phone call fraud complaint from a female. The victim reported she had received a telephone call from a male who claimed to be with DirecTV and stated he could lower her bill. The victim had been in contact with DirecTV a few weeks prior and had her bill lowered by thirteen dollars, so she believed this to be a legitimate call. The male advised she needed to purchase Apple gift cards. Red flag. Does everybody know this now? Red flag, gift cards? Sorry. And she would receive credits on her bill or in the form of Visa gift cards. Unfortunately, the female did purchase twenty-one hundred dollars worth of Apple gift cards and had sent pinch, pictures containing the card numbers to the male. The female did notify Apple of the fraudulent incident, but probably not much that could be done. So, like, I've stood up here for a few years and if you get phone calls where they want you to go get gift cards and send me a photo of the numbers off it, or I'll keep you on the phone and go get them and you can read me the numbers, you just, if it doesn't feel right to you, it's, it's not right. And if it's a true company, you can always say, I'll call you back. Let me think about it. I'll call you back. And give us a call and we'll say, don't do it. Because we hate to see people out that money. And cyber criminals are.
It, it's very sad how just widespread this is.
It is.
It's crazy.
It is. And I don't know if they all just sat at home during COVID and thought up new ways to get people to send money and that kind of thing, but I know that those kinds of crimes have been through the roof, unfortunately, which is really sad. Because it's generally people that can't afford to lose that kind of money, who lose that money. So that was all of the reports of value for the month, which is kind of quiet.
It's also unfortunate about the, the resident lost her kayaks. I, I saw that on Facebook, too.
Oh, was it on Facebook?
So, I mean, someone did something right. I mean, they made it road safe. They got off the road to do something so it'd be safer. And then they get pinched for it. That's, that's really, that's sad, so.
Well, maybe Public Works was driving by in Psalm.
You're far too optimistic of a sheriff, Stephanie.
Probably not. So other than that, we did have four hundred and eighty-three radio calls that the sheriff's office responded to in July. So it's not like those three calls were it and the rest of the time we're just trolling around. That's not what's going on, but.
Well, if that's highlights, that's good. Any questions from council?
I'd like to add one thing. Please also be aware of people coming around selling services door to door. There's some pest control applicators that are going door to door offering their services and essentially spraying almost a water type solution. I had two calls today regarding this. So be aware of people going around selling door to door, ask to see credentials. Make sure they're valid and reputable people before you do anything. If you have any questions, call City Hall because they're supposed to have a permit to do so.
Or they can call nine-one-one and we'll send a squad to go check and make sure that they do have a valid permit with the city.
Jack, what's our current status in terms of requiring these type of vendors to be registered to the city?
They either have to have a transit merchants permit or a peddler's permit. So, and they're very, they're, they're very expensive and they have to do background checks and everything for them to do that.
Okay. And, and, you know, this happens at my place, too.
Oh, yeah.
The first thing I ask them is, is, do they have a permit to do this? And they all say yes. And I say, I don't think you do. I let them know who I am, then they.
And then they leave.
Then they say, yeah, I'll get a permit. So then they go to the next house, unfortunately. Okay, any questions from audience for Sheriff Stephanie?
Um, you said sometimes those are deep sculpting your house, too.
Oh, yeah.
They're going around and just spraying all here twenty miles. I'll just wait to it. And they want to walk around the scope out. And they leave this door unlocked. What do I see in the windows?
Yeah, we've got the snoopers, too, you know, so.
Well, as for burglaries, we only had two last month, which, you know, back probably ten years ago when I first started, twelve years ago up here, I think we had a lot more, so.
Yeah.
So that's good.
So things are looking up for the city.
So I have a question. There has been reports recently, in the past few weeks, of vehicles being broken into in the Viking Preserve neighborhood.
Yes.
And also that there was a vehicle on Sunday that was broken in in the church parking lot during the day. Are you aware of that? Is there anything that people can do?
Before you respond, Shelley, the, the question from the audience, because it won't come over on the tape, is, is there's been a rash of, of break, car break-ins and in kind of the southwestern part of the city, basically.
Yes, I am aware of the vehicle break-ins that were in that subdivision. I am aware of that. The church one during the day, I am not aware of that one, but I've been out of the office for a week, so it's just a matter. But the deputies who worked the contract, they actually obviously pass that information along to each other. So the word gets out that this is going on and then they'll, you know, try and catch somebody. The problem with vehicle break-ins is we can't be everywhere in the city during the nighttime hours. So like if people hear something, you hear voices, you hear, you know, you see somebody riding a bike or something, typically after midnight, because that's when, you know, most opportunity will happen for that kind of a crime. If people wake up and hear something goofy or whatever, call nine-one-one. And we don't, you know, we'd rather come out and not be able to find a problem and know that everything's good than to, you not call and then you wake up in the morning and you go outside and your window's broken and you're, you know. And another thing is to try not to leave anything valuable in your vehicle if it's parked outside. I don't believe it's happened up here, but I know in the Twin Cities area, they had some break-in to vehicles where they hit the garage door opener and they'd actually go into the house. So they're committing burglaries while people are in it. So I don't think that was the case at all up here, but just, you know, be mindful of what is in your vehicle if you're gonna be leaving it outside overnight.
I, I think to add, add to your comment, too, it's, it's not just leave valuables in there. If you leave anything on your seat that, you know, someone goes by and sees it and just thinks that it's valuable, they're, they're gonna break in. And, and correct or wrong, but these break-ins only, it only takes five, ten seconds and they're done.
Oh, yeah.
So they're not hanging around your property. Just grabbing and going, they're gone, so. But it's unfortunate. Another unfortunate part of our city, so everywhere.
It happens everywhere. Unfortunately, that is, you know, like I call it a crime of opportunity, although sometimes you might not even have anything of value in their car and they break in just to find out if you have anything.
It's happened to me twice, so.
Yeah, it does happen, but if you can keep stuff of value out of your car, keep your car, you know, safe, you know, in your garage at night where it's less likely to happen, not that it won't, but less likely.
Was there another question for Shelley? I thought I heard some.
I was just gonna say, um, if your garage door opens, won't you go in your car?
Yeah, the garage door opens. We've mentioned that a couple of times. It's, it's, you don't think about those things, but then when you think about it, it's like, wow, that's opening your whole world to anyone, so.
My husband won't let my kids have any garage openers in their cars. Like, they can't figure out to bring their wallets in and their purses in out of the car. They're not having a garage door opener. Luckily, they've made it through so far. Not that they do that anymore. They, everything's out of their cars.
Shelley, you were on a vacation last week. Were you on a kayaking trip?
I could have used kayaks, but no.
I'm gonna save our commander from the audience right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Have a good night.
Say, Jack, Randy brought up a good thing on that Viking Preserve. Are they still going along with those streetlights? I know that that was on your punch list. Is that still?
The streetlights are the obligation of the developer to install those before the final letter of credit is released. Stephanie's working with him to get that done now.
Because I drove by there late Saturday night. Every house in that development had lights on. Every house. Unbelievable.
Well, it's good that they got the message.
Yeah, they got the message, but I mean, the streetlights would help, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, onto our fire department report. Chief DeSherm.
Good evening. Good evening, council, mayor. Rough crowd tonight. Real quick, before I get into the numbers of July, fire permits are still available, okay? This part of the state is not under total burning restrictions, so I just want to clarify that. However, that changes day by day and that information comes from the DNR, not from the fire department or the city. So it's, it's a day by day thing at this point. So in July, of Shelley's forty-three hundred calls that they answered, seventy-nine of those were fire-related. And of those, fifty-nine were medicals. We had six crashes, vehicle crashes, a couple of fire alarms and smoke alarms. We did have a small handful of burning and, and smoke calls. And remember, you know, people can have recreational fires and they're three by three, you know, three feet wide, three feet high. And if you're gonna burn anything else, that's when you need your burning permit. We did have, you know, four fires that we were at, grass fires and vehicle fire and things, things like that. Right now, year to date, we're running about seventy-two percent of all of our calls are, are medical related, which incidentally is pretty similar to other municipalities in our, in our neighboring cities. So we are on a, a record course. We're sixty-seven calls ahead today of what we were a year ago today. So, you know, those, those numbers keep, keep climbing. You might see several, on, on my report, several addresses that are three, four in a row, especially in, in some of our mobile home parks. And just remember, those have individual lots and things like that. So there, it wasn't like we were going to the same unit all the time. I just want to bring that out. You know, and, and I'm sure like with the sheriff's department, we respond to where the people are. Where, you know, where the larger populations are, that's where our higher numbers are gonna be. So. Got any questions?
I know this would be part of your next month's report, but we had a rather significant fire a couple of weeks ago.
Uh, just last week.
Last week.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, over on National Street, there was a, actually was a garage fire, large garage, thirty by sixty feet. And when the fire department got there, in fact, somebody's, took a picture and sent it to me, like, would have been three, four minutes after the call went out, a neighbor. And the, at that time, the building, the structure was totally involved. So we, it, it's quite a large loss and right now that's under investigation.
Okay. But no, no injuries, right?
No injuries, right.
Good.
Very, very warm night, though, so. And, you know, the, the crews worked really well. Something else, that's the first, so that was the first time we've all gone to a new system called box alarms. Something else, that's the first, so that was the first time we've all gone to a new system called box alarms. So instead of, you know, when, a little bit technical, I probably don't have to get this technical. But when we go to a call and like, your house is on fire, and if I get there or maybe on the way, I'll think, I better call for help, you know, from other cities, because we're always listening to, you know, what units are coming online and things like that. So instead of thinking about what assistance we need in mutual aid, it's all automatic now. It's, in other words, it's easier to tell them to go home than to call.
Right. And we had three other departments that helped?
Yeah, we had, uh, Ham Lake was there, Oak Grove, Bethel, uh, Saint Francis, uh, that was, uh, they, they sent a tanker, Linwood. So, yeah, there, there, it was, uh, you know, the five, what I call the five northern cities.
Okay.
So, and we, we, yeah, and we work re- really well together. So, it, it's much like when a, uh, deputy takes a call, uh, you know, I, I hear a lot of times that, you know, automatically they got a backup coming. So it's, it's kind of the same thing, except we're a little bit larger scale on our-
Good.
On our vehicles.
Any questions from council members?
How's the drought shaping up for the rest of summer and looking into fall?
Well, you know, I was looking at the weather forecast and, you know, we could have a lot of rain. Seems like even when the, uh, when we look at forecasts, it's a hit and miss. So, uh, it, it could be, I tell you, it could be a tough, uh, a tough fall if we don't get the precipitation. You know, with, you know, that, that severe drought is creeping into Anoka County, you know, it's right next door. Uh, and it's, you know, it keeps creeping this way. And, uh, you'd be surprised, at, at least I am, I'm amazed how fast these fires are, are spreading. So, you know, if, if this continues, you know, some of our areas could, uh, be, uh, very vulnerable.
I assume when, uh, the leaves start changing, that fire-
Right, and then, and then the grass, you know, all dies off.
Gets dry.
Even, even the little bit of green that we got now. And that stuff just, it's, it's like a blowtorch. Anybody else? Any questions for the audience? All right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, on to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the next consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made second, discussion?
I'd like to pull item D, August ninth, twenty twenty-one. See council minutes.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item G.
Okay. And then, uh, real quickly, item B and then item H, I'll pull those two. So B, D, G, and H are exempt from the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item B is something I talked to Jack about ahead of time. Um, did you look at those minutes, Jack?
Yes.
And it says June on top.
Yes, we'll make that correction.
So those, those should be July?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that, that was my only change there. The title to those minutes on item B still said June, not July, so. Uh, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item B. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item D.
Um, I have one correction on page sixty-five of the city council packet, or page eight of nine of the minutes. Uh, last paragraph, second to last sentence reads, tomorrow night there was a park meeting in which he was unable to attend. That should read, park meeting in which he was going to attend. So strike unable and put in going. And that is-
Can I make another suggestion? In that line before where it says there was a park meeting, it should say there is. Does that make more sense?
Either which way, that's-
Well, was is past tense.
Yeah.
When I read it, I thought you were talking about something, but it, it, it should be his.
Sure, we, we can make it is.
Okay.
So tomorrow night there is a park meeting.
Is that your only change?
Yeah.
And make that a motion?
Uh, if there's nothing else in the minutes, I'll make the motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item G, which is, and this is mine, uh, temporary driveway easement. I just have a quick question on it, Jack, um, related to our discussion on the renaming of Sand Hill Parkway. Th- this would also be with the net?
That's correct.
Is there any need to change that on those drawings now?
We could certainly do it at this time. It'd probably be prudent to do so, so it doesn't-
So the new owners know what the name of the road's gonna be?
We can add that to the next council, we need to make that change.
I'll make a, a motion to approve item G with the change of revising the street name to, to Sand Hill Parkway for the future frontage road. Is there a second? Motion made second, discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion pa- passes. Item H.
Oh, no, I had item G and I'm confused about this. I thought this was about somebody is giving up some land for a neighbor to use the driveway. Is that?
No, this is, this is an easement that was executed back in twenty- twenty sixteen, and these are just some minor clarifications in it to assure the purchaser that this will transfer to them and refer and actually apply to the development that they're gonna do. This was part of that barn goddesses agreement. Uh, we abandoned or gave up the CUP at the last meeting because it was no longer desired by the owner, so.
Suzanne, I apologize, I think I mixed, both of these items are related though, right?
No, these are two separate items. Uh, this one is the one that's up here off two twenty-first and the one that you referred to, it's called Aberdeen Street now. It's that driveway that accesses that barn goddess property. The other item, item H, is on the opposite side of Highway sixty-five. It was that service road that we talked about constructing back in twenty thirteen between Johnson Street and two twenty-first.
So I, I messed that up, cause my, my amendment should have been to item H. I was reading the easement wrong.
I'm a little confused, but, okay, so, should we do this over or?
Can, can I clarify? Or you, you had item G, right?
I had item G.
Let's, let's take care of that first.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve item G. I, I just was misunderstanding what the whole thing was. It was hard for me to understand as I read through it. So I'm making a motion to approve item G on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Chris, should I resend my previous one first? Cause I referenced the wrong item.
Yeah, it's, it's already been approved, so rescinding it would be a good idea.
Okay, uh, I'll just make a motion right then to resend my previous motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I apologize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that, that passes. Now we, to the motion that Suzanne made, uh, which is approval as is, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item H, which is the easement for the frontage road, the easement on the east side, south of two twenty-first. That'll make a motion to, to approve with the change of the name of the road, proposed road to be Sand Hill Parkway.
Uh, that is on the, this is, I'm, I'm sorry, this is on the west side of sixty-five.
Jack, you shouldn't have put these right next to each other in the agenda. I'm looking at page ninety-five of our packet, which is part of item H.
Hang on one moment.
Why am I so confused by this? I know why I'm confused now. Yeah, that should be on the west side there.
This is showing, act- actually the attachment that was sent to us shows both of those easements. The first easement is the Johnson Street easement, which is on the west side. The second plot drawing is on the east side. That's the one we talked about changing to Sand Hill Parkway. And that's the one that also runs concurrently with this temporary driveway easement.
So, are we, that's the east side. So this is, this was the easement that was gonna go to Lisa Palm's project, correct?
That's correct. The item G, when it's the Lisa Palm, let me pull it up here so we can kind of get some clarification on that. This, this is the easement, this was, this property was the Lisa Palm project site, which is since been, it's gonna be sold to another purchaser. And this is Aberdeen Street. This is the one we talked about bringing up to the council again, the next meeting to rename Sand Hill Parkway, cause this will be part of that alignment. Item H is on the opposite side of sixty-five. It's easement that we acquired back in twenty sixteen when we were gonna do this service road project. This project was actually approved by the Mendoc Metro Office, and we were going ahead with their approval and it went to their central office. Their central office came back and told us that we were gonna have to get these property owners who fronted sixty-five to give up all their access. Council at that time said, no, they wouldn't do that. And as a result, the cooperative agreement grant that we had secured, the city turned it down.
Okay.
Now, there were actually four deeds in this whole dedication process. This is parcel one right here. This is parcel two. This is parcel three, and this is parcel four. It involved two families, the Silvesters and the Atkins. Uh, the four deeds were submitted simultaneously. This deed right here, even though it shows up on the Anoka County property maps, the county says they have no record of it being recorded now.
Okay.
What the reason was, or it was a county mistake, or it just got bundled up, or our mistake, I don't know. But the property owners here have said they will re-sign this deed and then we can record it.
So, so do you know why this was never recorded?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know why. This was back in twenty thirteen. And it could have been since there were, maybe that, there were all four submitted at one time. Maybe the county got it and missed one. Maybe we didn't send it in. I don't know.
Okay. But that's, that's something we normally do though, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So back to my confusion over, everything's on the west side of sixty-five here.
Correct.
So Sand Hill Parkway doesn't-
Correct.
I, the way this packet was packing, that, that's what confused me, I'm sorry. Then I am going to, um, move to approve item H with no changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Suzanne, second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Uh, we are done with consent agenda. On to department reports. Our city attorney?
Uh, thank, oh, go ahead, Jack.
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead with this and then I'll turn it over to Chris. This is a private kennel interim use permit, I U P slash license. Tammy Gimple, two two three five nine Baton Street. Tammy Gimple's had a private kennel license since two thousand and four. This I U P, which was not a license, it was an I U P, allowed her to have up to ten of her own dogs on her own property. The I U P expired in July, on July sixth, twenty nineteen. Ms. Gimple applied for renewal, and this was discussed at the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. Discussion brought up questions about the I U P requirement, and the city attorney reviewed this situation and provided his report, which is exhibited in attachment one of the packet. The city attorney recommended the following. Number one, Tammy Gimple does not need an I U P for a private kennel. The city should treat the I U P application as an application for a private kennel license and refer the matter to the planning commission pursuant to City Code, section ten fifty-four D. Number two, the city needs to determine if limited non-commercial dog breeding constitutes a business operation. The scale of breeding, one litter per year at Gratitude Farms, does not con- constitute commercial breeding under Minnesota statute, section three forty-seven dash fifty-seven subdivision five. If small-scale breeding constitutes a business, Tammy Gimple should apply for another home occupation I U P. Number three, the city should consider amending the private kennel license to remove the phrase, and the owner or lesssee of said premises is not conducting a business operation involving the dogs, whether for profit or nonprofit. With the city's attorney's opinion, it is difficult to determine the utility of this phrase. The goal is to have kennels on the property har- harboring no more than two adult dogs, and the business language does not add anything to the definition. There are currently three active private kennel I U Ps in the city. In the last ten years, there have been ten kennel or dog-related I U Ps issued. Those both active and expired would be contacted to determine if they follow the license or I U P requirements if this is a process the city takes. City would work with these permit holders for renewal, renewal of I U P or the transition of a private kennel license. Staff requests consideration of approval by the city council regarding the city attorney's recommendations is noted above.
Okay, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Jack, mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, I know this has been, um, discussed a lot, uh, recently since coming before the, the council. Uh, most recently on the second meeting in July, I thought it'd be helpful, uh, for, uh, the council to, uh, number one, see the I U Ps, uh, that relate to dogs at this property all in one place. Uh, to see where they're at and to go through some of the zoning requirements and, and kennel licensing requirements for, for this property. So, uh, first, uh, there's, um, three I U Ps, uh, related to dogs that have been issued for the property. One is the Animal Control Services, uh, I U P, which is up to date. And there's the Dog Distribution I U P, um, Dog Food Distribution Home Occupation I U P, which is up to date. And then there's the, uh, I U P for kennel licensure, which expired in twenty nineteen. Uh, this came before the council for renewal of the I U P. At that time, consulting the zoning ordinance, it, uh, was determined that, uh, an I U P is not required for a private kennel. It's a license, uh, that the city issues, it's an accessory use. Uh, so an I, I U P is, is simply not required. It's governed by chapter ten of the, of the city zoning code. And uh, private kennel's required, uh, for more than two dogs. So if you have more than two dogs on the property, you need a, a private kennel. Additionally, it has this phrase, um, and the owner or lesssee of said premises is not conducting a business operation involving the dogs, whether for profit or nonprofit. Now, commercial kennel is defined as accepting dogs, uh, from the general public, um, according to the ordinance, then you're, then you're operating a per, uh, commercial kennel. With a private kennel, if you have dogs that are under four months old, they don't count. So if you're doing small-scale breeding in a private kennel, um, it wouldn't violate the private kennel licensure, because dogs under four months don't count. Uh, the state sets requirements for a commercial breeder in statute, and those are ten or more dogs and five or more litters per year. Based on all the information we have, uh, any dog breeding that does go on on the property is not to the scale to qualify for, uh, a commercial breeder, so that, uh, statute's, uh, not relevant to, to the present considerations, so.
And that is more than five litters of puppies or kittens per year?
Five or more, correct.
Okay.
And also more than, more than ten dogs.
Adult dogs.
Correct. So, looking through the, the history of this, um, and, uh, trying to move forward in a constructive way- and trying to move forward in a constructive way, number one, just approving an I U P is not necessary, because an I U P is not required. Uh, number two, there needs to be determination whether, uh, non-commercial dog breeding constitutes a, a business operation. If it does, then the council may require another home occupation I U P for the property related to breeding. Uh, regardless, I would recommend the council consider amending the private kennel license to remove the phrase, "And the owner or lessie of said premises is not conducting a business operation involving the dogs, whether for profit or nonprofit." It's difficult to think when that phrase would be applicable, and it would keep the definitions of private kennel and commercial kennel more consistent. With that, again, I, I recommend those three things. Wanted to provide some of the history related to these I U Ps on the property, and then try to move this forward. And I can answer any questions the council has.
Any questions for Chris?
For this private kennel license, Gratitude Farms is the A C O, Animal Control Officer. Is this private kennel license required to be the Animal Control Officer?
No, it's not.
What?
The Animal Control measure is governed by the I U P that's issued for the A C O.
Okay, what, what would be the main differences between the two?
The main differences is this relates to the number of dogs the property owner can have on the property that are their own dogs. And the city has placed restrictions related to the home occupation Animal Control Officer in the I U P. A lot of the conditions that have been placed via the I U P for Animal Control Officer are the same as the private kennel. For example, no accumulations of feces, and securing the animals in the, in enclosures, having access to indoor space, things like that. Those are conditions that the city placed in the, in the I U P. This relates to, you know, how many dogs Gratitude Farms has on the property that they're not holding related to the Animal Control Officer duties.
Okay, so, the private kennel license, if I'm understanding it right, would be potentially ten dogs?
Based on the size of this property, they can have up to ten dogs.
Okay. And, but the A C O with I U P, how many dogs can she have with that?
Uh, up, up to fifteen, according to the I U P.
So, potentially, she could have up to twenty-five dogs there?
Theoretically.
Okay.
And it, and that's how it exists right now?
That is.
Okay.
That doesn't contradict each other? Because if one says she can have ten dogs, and the other says she can have fifteen, that means she can have twenty-five?
Uh, that doesn't mean she can have twenty-five of her own dogs on the property.
Total of twenty-five?
Yeah, it's, it's theoretically possible that there could be, theoretically possible there could be a, a total of, of twenty-five dogs on the property. This can be revisited in fairly short order, because the city's going to have to revisit the Animal Control I U P in three months, uh, excuse me, four months, because it's up for renewal. So, it can be considered in relation to the total amount of dogs allowed on the property at that time.
But the two don't affect each other?
They should not.
And what about the intermingling of dogs? I mean, how, how is that even gonna be controlled? That, i- if she's breeding dogs, how is she gonna make sure that the, uh, dogs brought in from Animal Control or the dogs that are being boarded or kennelled aren't mating or whatever? Or is that okay?
Uh, I, I can't comment on, on whether or not that's okay. What I will say is you're free to place restrictions on either the private kennel license or the I U P. So, if that's a concern the council has, that can be a condition that's placed on either one.
Well, it's a concern in my mind, but I don't know about the rest.
But that's, but that's what they're allowed right now.
Right.
Ten of their own dogs, and then if it's a busy month, you know, she could be quarantined fifteen dogs. Quarant, up to, up to fifteen dogs on a permit, so. But those dogs don't stay very long. Those are transient, so.
And, a- again, the, the I U P for Animal Control, mayor and, and council members, is coming before the council in, in four months. So, if there's a concern about the total number of dogs on the property encompassing the private dogs and the dogs that come to the property via, for quarantine purposes, it can be addressed at that time.
Okay. Do we have a private kennel license application process right now?
Not really. Uh, it's, it's the same as the I U P process, let me put it that way. The only difference is we, we've been issuing I U Ps. Instead of the I U Ps, now it'd be issuing a license.
Do we need to have that codified to, to do that, to do the private kennel license?
There should be part of consideration of perhaps an amendment to the private kennel license. At the very least, there should be a form application. The council approves the conditions that are placed on it. There's quite a few standard conditions already in the ordinance. But things like, what's the size of the property? How's it laid out? You know, have you met these conditions? In addition to it, the council should establish a, a application fee or license, license fee, if it has not already done so.
So, how's, how's the license issue? Still, does it still go through council?
It go, it goes to the planning commission first, and then it goes to the council.
Okay.
One of the reasons for that is to ensure its setbacks are met. It's a physical structure that's gonna be on the property. So, it's reviewed, just like a shed would be reviewed.
And is there a public hearing that goes along with that as well?
There's no stated public hearing that goes with the license.
For a private kennel license, okay. So, perhaps, let's break this up and just focus on that aspect first, 'cause it sounds like a fundamental change that's being recommended. So, Chris, do you think we need to do anything formally before we send this to planning?
Uh, yes, I, I do. I think, um, there would need to be a determination, and it could potentially be brought up at, at the next meeting on, on whether or not the council wants to amend the definition of, of private kennel. And there would, there are two places.
Right, I know you recommended that earlier, too.
Yeah.
Have that noted, so.
Yeah. But I, I, and the other thing is, at the administrative level, we should inform Gratitude Farms that we can't go forward with the I U P application, because it needs to be a private kennel application, which is, you know, I, I realize that we're dealing with some semantics here, but it's, it's laid out in the ordinance, and that's the difference between an accessory use and an interim use. You know, an interim use is gonna get recorded, and there's a lot of other things that go with it. A license is, is sort of a lesser, lesser permission to operate.
So, does a, um, just a license, does that require any monitoring at all?
Well, there are conditions, mandatory conditions placed on, on the license, and, um, and it, it's going to come, it's gonna come before the council for review. Um, so, it, it will, will be monitored, and in addition to it, the council can place more conditions than the mandatory conditions on the license. For example, if there was going to be an annual inspection, 'cause I, I don't see that. I said, I see it says the city council reserves the right to issue additional conditions. Uh, but if you wanted to reserve the right to have an annual inspection, you can absolutely add that as a condition.
Okay. Um, I don't know. This, um, what's in here, is this an example of what would be on there? Um, city of, this I U P, is this a, an example? Because, as I read through it, um, the, it contradicts itself in the number three. It says the permit shall expire, you know, when the property is sold, or the I U P expires. But then it says there's a term of three years. So, when does it, when would it expire? Would it still be three years, or would it not have an expiration date?
You can, you can actually, you could do that either way on an I U P, because if you don't have a term on an I U P, the condition is determined whether it's valid. So, if there's violations, it can be canceled due to conditions. On a license, you would definitely want an expiration date.
Okay.
But those are, those are things that we can deal with when, when the license comes before us, too. I mean, what you're, you're looking at the existing I U P.
Right.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's things to be cleaned up. But I, I can foresee a lot of that going over to the license, so.
And, and, and with that, I, I wanna also be clear that it's already in the ordinance. The first license is one year. And then, any subsequent license can be up to three years. But three years doesn't have to be granted. Theoretically, you can renew a license annually.
And that, the renewal, does that come through the same process, or is that administrative at that point?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't believe it specifies.
I thought we made that change. If there's no issues, it becomes administrative.
It, it does become administrative on certain things, on just the basic home occupations. Um, this, it probably needs to be done by council approval, you know.
Maybe that's what can be clarified when we get some language in front of us.
I, I think that, I think that could be clarifying. It, it, it says the initial license needs to be acted based on a recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay.
So, are you looking for a motion, or just direction on this?
I think, I think direction. I think we can come up with some amendments that might be helpful to this. But I, one of the goals here was to provide a little bit of context and updates to the council about how this came about, what the confusion was at the last meeting, and some recommendations about how to move forward. Um, I think for the next meeting, we could have some amendments for the council's consideration to clarify this ordinance, potentially, and if we can meet our, our requirements on that. But if we can have those, they're not substantial, but there are some changes that would likely be helpful. And then, and at that time, a new application can be made to buy Gratitude Farms to get a private kennel license.
The, the, one of the things we would have to do, if we are doing consideration of changes at the next meeting, we'd have to make sure that we post this in the newspaper for two weeks, if it's an ordinance change.
Is it an ordinance change, though?
It's an ordinance change, so this would probably be the first meeting in September.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'd consider it, and then we'd have to set, then you'd have to publish it down?
Correct.
You're gonna pu, you're gonna wait till we actually see it and improve language, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But don't we have several kennel I U Ps out there already?
We currently have three existing private kennel I U Ps. There are, there have been ten, including those three, there have been ten that have been issued in the last eleven years. Uh, some of those have expired, some people have moved. Uh, we'd have to go back and check. Uh, Chris and I talked about this. Part of the process would be to contact some of these previous owners, too, to enable them to transition in from the I U P into the license. Uh, we have addresses and things. We can make those contacts with the ones that are still here.
And then for the, there's several that appear to no longer need the I U P?
Correct.
Have we confirmed those at all?
We, we have the address that they're no, they're, they're, they're not doing any dogs, or they've moved. We got, I think, two, two that have actually moved out, so.
So, I mean, it's this kind of sidebar, but is there a way to clean it up in our system that they're no longer active I U Ps?
Yes, we can do that. We, we can, we can contact, I think it'd be best to contact them each one directly, ensure that they're not utilizing the private kennel I U P, and then that would take care of that.
Is there, is there a process? Do we need to rescind those ones, then?
A discontinuation of the use for more than a year should terminate it. So, if we, if we could even get them to confirm dates where they stopped keeping dogs on the property, uh, and confirm that, that should be sufficient to, to terminate them.
And that would go in the property file and stay in the property file, then, right?
Yes.
Just make sure that's cleaned up, you know, we got enough issues with these I U Ps all over, so. Okay, with regards to a private kennel license language and the plan for staff to bring it back to council on September thirteenth, is that the next meeting?
Next, next regular council meeting.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, let's go to the second point, then, uh, which was the determination of non-commercial dog breeding operations and the scale of breeding. You have some propos, language you want proposed to change that or clarify?
Yes, I, I think, number one, removing the, um, is not conducting a business operation involving dogs, whether for profit or nonprofit, will likely, uh, answer this question, because if, if that section's removed, uh, dogs up to four months old don't count as dogs, according to the ordinance. So, a person can engage in small-scale breeding so long as they're not a commercial breeder under Minnesota statute. And the way the ordinance is set up right now, if you have two dogs, and you, and I don't know how frequently two dogs could breed, but if you have two dogs and you breed those two dogs, not only do you not need a private kennel license, you don't need a home occupation either. That's just something that you can do.
Yeah.
The way the, the ordinance operates now.
And even if you sell the puppies for money?
Yeah.
And that's for up to five times a year? They, they, if they do it, they can't do it more than five times before it's commercial? What is, what is the rule there?
According to the state statute, if you have ten or more adult, adult dogs that produce five or more litters of puppies per year, you're a commercial breeder, and you're regulated as such. If you have five dogs, adult dogs on your property, or eight adult dogs on the property, and they produce two litters of puppies per year, you're not a commercial breeder, according to the state of Minnesota. So, I, I think that's.
And that's the conflict in the language?
Correct.
Between our ordinance and what state law is.
Correct.
Statute is.
And how would that be monitored?
Well, I, I think the, um, I think the point is it, it might not need to be.
Well, it, 'cause I know she has five dogs.
Well, let's, let's not focus on just gratitude, 'cause this affects many others in the city, too.
Other people have, might breed five times a year, or four times one year and five the next. How, how would we monitor that?
Oh, that's a very good question.
I don't know that we would.
Well, if it's five, then it's commercial.
But we don't know if it's there. It's, this is, this is like the criteria of triggering to have a permit or triggering whether they're commercial or not.
Or, or home occupation, but.
Correct.
Uh, would I be correct in this, reading this, and whose animals produce more than five? So, that'd be six litters. Or am I incorrect on that?
I, I believe it's five or more.
It says whose animals produce more than five total litters.
Let me, let me confirm with the statute.
That's what the state statute, state statute says.
Correct.
So, the number would be six?
Six.
Okay. So, you can have up to five litters. Once you have six, then it'd be commercial, per state statute.
My question still stands. How do you make sure if somebody's not having six, doing commercial breeding?
We, we don't. I mean, we could have dozens of people in, in the city that breed like that, but I, I don't know how we would know unless neighbors complain about it. but I, I don't know how we would know unless neighbors complain about it.
That's a good point.
It's like any other ordinance, it's only as good as if you can enforce it.
Yeah, it's gotta be, well, not so much enforcement, it's how well people follow the ordinance. So.
You know, you, you could also have the option for something like that, to treat it as a home occupation.
The commercial aspect or just, just breeding of animals?
Theoretically breeding, breeding animals. Uh, I'm not saying that you want to regulate that to that degree.
We're capable of doing that.
Capable.
Okay, but not wanting to do that, so. Well, I think the, the, the third bullet about the language change, I think, makes sense. I mean, it's, the more consistent we are with what state statutes, the better usually, so. And to make it clear is all the better. And I think, like you said, that second bullet then falls in line, so. I, I agree with both those recommendations as well. Any other thoughts? So, Chris, then with the fact that it seems like we're agreeing all three bullets, what do you, what are you proposing to bring back then on the thirteenth?
I think we'd bring back a list of amendments to the ordinances to affect these changes, clarify them, and also likely, uh, for an application for private kennel and then a recommendation on establishing a fee.
Okay. Any thoughts on that? Disagreements? Agreements?
No, I think it's something we need to do.
Okay. All right, anything else on this item? Okay.
You'd have all the direction you need, Chris?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item C two.
At the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting, a motion was made to approve for the censure of councilperson Suzanne Urkel for an unauthorized inspection and misuse of city resources and police protection regarding an incident that occurred on July ninth, two thousand twenty-one. At the July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting, a motion was made to approve for the censure of councilperson Shelley Beck for an unauthorized inspection regarding an incident that occurred on July ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Based on Ms. Beck's resignation, the motion to censure councilperson Beck could be postponed indefinitely by city council. Both motions for censure were then motioned and approved to be tabled into the city attorney was, and allow the city attorney to, for air resolution for censure to be returned to the city council at the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting for action on the matter. Draft minutes for the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one meeting are included in the packet for your review on this matter. Tabled motions to censure councilperson Suzanne Urkel by resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-eight and Shelley Beck by resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-nine are presented for council action.
Okay, do we have a motion on resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-eight?
Make a, go ahead, go ahead. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Well, I guess I'll start. This censorship is like a badge of honor to me. You three good old boys would censure me at every meeting, you could, and you know it. You keep trying to discredit me and I'm thinking it's making me stronger. First, I want to say this, it's not about Ms. Gimble personally. I've met her in the past and I actually liked her. This is about the city allowing rules to be broken, broken complaints to be going unresolved for one business that's also getting taxpayer money while going after other businesses, kind of like bulldogs, and putting them out of business even. I received many of the same complaints as the city regarding gratitude farms, plus some. It appeared that nothing was being done, nothing. I wanted to go and look around and see for myself if the complaints were true. The word inspection is totally an inaccurate term for my intentions that day. During my military years, I worked with OSHA. I wrote standard operating procedures for major medical centers, for clinics. I walked with OSHA as they inspected. And you know what I saw? I saw them ignore major violations too and write up the next department for a similar violation. I saw that and I was starting to feel like deja vu, like this is happening again here. You can see why I had a strong need to see for myself. I was also involved in surprise inspections and scheduled inspections. And there's a lot that can be hidden for scheduled inspections. I need to be able to speak honestly when people call me. If they are wrong and the complaints have no merit, I would love to tell them so. If it's true, then the city and the council need to know. You will never find out on a scheduled inspection if these complaints are true, never. We all know that, we know that from the bottom of our hearts. When I went there, I never demanded entry. My plan was to ask to be shown around the designated area of the animal control area. I hoped it was going to turn out just like when I went to the North Metro Animal Control. They showed me around, they were very polite. Her I U P states that random inspections must be permitted. Therefore, it wa, it was a constitutional act. This entire event has been taken so far out of proportion, indeed. Steve and Tim have done similar things. They have discussed in my presence how they repeatedly drive by certain residents. That's kind of harassment. They check out the, the recycling place on sixty-five and talked about it up here. The car lot and other businesses. That's kind of hypocritical. Censuring me for something that you guys as mentors to me, in a sense, have done. They went to observe businesses to see if they were in compliance. That's kind of what I was doing. Resource officers have sat out a resident's house. Who authorized that? They have been called to city council meetings and asked to remove people who have spoken without the council voting on it. I did not ask for two officers, I asked for just one. If what I asked for was so wrong, why didn't they refuse? They could have refused. I'm a resident, they could have said, that's not in our purview of job description. The police officer lied in the report and put opinion in the report. I got a call from the sheriff's department and they apologized to me for the officer's behavior and said he was being disciplined. Supposedly, the city got this email and the council should have got, had it forwarded to them. There are a lot of accusations in this resolution, but only one official ordinance that I may have violated. But remember, the entire city staff falls under the council. Mostly, it is a list of accusations of violations of what I think as opinions. It's political and it's out to make me look bad. I'm going to continue to argue on behalf of the residents in this city and do what I do. I am going to continue to seek transparency in this city. This is my goal. This is what I got elected for. And that's all I have to say, but.
Okay. Any other discussion? Um, I'll just respond to one accusation you had there about me inspecting, I can't remember the name, the recycling place along Central Avenue. That wasn't inspecting, I was driving by in an observation. That, that's far different than going on a property, let me finish. It's far different than going on a property and stating you want to inspect their business and bring a sheriff's department with you. I'm sorry?
I said, I just wanted to look around and I wasn't even able to talk to her.
Well, then, then don't compare that to, to my drive-by.
It's very similar.
How is it similar?
You were checking for compliance.
No, I wasn't checking for compliance of what? I wanted to see how, how full the place was. How is that checking for compliance?
The I U P, yes.
And it was the day, I think it was the day after staff had been there. That's not checking for compliance. And, more importantly, what did I do with that information? I brought it to council and to staff.
I wa, I didn't have any information to bring to council because.
But, but if I had an issue, I brought the staff to investigate. I, you, any council member, we don't have the authority to enter any property. And by going on a property, you're intimidating that, that business owner into thinking you have that authority. And you're missing, you're missing, you're missing the whole point of what this motion is.
I understand the motion, it's a slap on the hand by three good old boys trying to make a political statement against me.
Well, that, that's your unfortunate interpretation. It's, it's the fact that this resolution is very clear, that you didn't have authority. We all recognize that. And you took police resources that you shouldn't have. Has no. What's that?
As has other people in the city used police resources. I did it, I was a resident and a councilperson going to a public business and I asked for a police officer, one. And they could have denied me.
And you, and you think that's routine?
No, I didn't say it was routine, but they could have denied it if it was so wrong.
I, I believe the deputy stated, and it's in the resolution, that he thought your request was out of line.
Yeah. And he's also now sitting in a courthouse.
Ma'am, the discussion's up here.
Get it right.
And then, I mean, it's sort of concerning too in the way you presented this, and I'm not sure if you meant it that way, but we talked about the fact that in your previous career, you uncovered so many violations that were looked over by senior staff. And so you're making the same sort of suggestion that's what's happening here. And if that is, I think you should come out and clearly state that.
It, it's suspect because I, I didn't say it was true, but I said it, I, it's suspect because I've experienced it and I've seen all these complaints and I'm not seeing any resolution to any complaints.
So the complaints, you never brought forward to Jack? Just complaints that you read on?
They said they brought them forward to Jack.
Did you confirm that with Jack?
No, I did not.
Okay.
That's your job.
I, I'd like to make one statement too, that we've investigated the majority of complaints on gratitude farms. We've found no basis nor merit for those. It's mostly rumor, innuendo, Facebook gossip, and there's nobody that's come forward and says, I boarded a dog with Tammy Gimble or I have receipt for.
Excuse me. Excuse me. And, 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 and we've, we've had this in the past, we've had discussions in the past. These are all things that have been looked at. And so what you're suggesting is we've been duped by staff?
On Tammy? I don't know.
You don't know, but you're making the accusation, but you don't know.
I made the accusation. I said, I experienced it in the past and I don't know if it's happening now.
You're right, you don't. So, so what do you do?
What do I do?
Take it upon yourself to go into a business to see if staff's doing their job? You, you've got a circular argument here and it, it, it's, it's, it's not changing anything, so. I mean, the message is for you to understand and for all the council to understand, and we said this last time, we operate as a council, we don't operate as individuals out in the community doing city duties. We, we don't have that, we don't have that charge, we don't have that authority. So, I mean, that's what this is about. Hopefully, you get that message. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Onto the matter of resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-nine. I'm going to suggest we table this resolution considering the resignation of councilmember Beck.
I'll make a motion to table resolution twenty-one, twenty-one dash fifty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, on to item G one.
September work meeting. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, at seven P M. Items recommended for council discussion and review could include, but may not be limited to the following. Code enforcement report to update activities on our actions on the seven issues that we discussed last March. And then a discussion on zoning text amendments for the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan, uh, or any other items that council would like to add to that agenda. Staff recommends that city council sets the topics listed above for the September seventh, two thousand twenty work meeting agenda. Uh, I had a discussion with the mayor today regarding the zoning text amendments. We were under the impression that there was going to be a four-fifths vote required by the planning commission. You are correct, that's a simple majority. So, uh, depending on what city council does, there could be some vacancies on the planning commission. We could still hold that public hearing at the planning commission though on September the twenty-seventh, I believe, or twenty-eighth.
Okay.
For the zoning text amendments approval.
So you're proposing that we, we go through the text amendments on the work meeting and that goes to planning at the end of September?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the two topics, code enforcement and zoning text amendments for the September seventh monthly work meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
Chris, is there anything pertaining to the, uh, the dog issues that we just discussed that we should discuss at this work meeting? Or will you be handling all of that?
There is one zoning amendment that will be required. Because private, the definition of private kennel appears both in chapter ten and in the zoning ordinance. So there will be one zoning amendment that's required.
Okay, uh, will that need to be discussed at this meeting or can that be discussed at?
It actually can and should be included in this, in this meeting. It'll be the same amendment as the general amendment to chapter ten.
Chris, are you intended to be at the work meeting for this? Do you need to?
I, I don't think I'd need to be because the more substantive amendments relate to chapter ten. All this is, is a change in the definition of private kennel in the zoning ordinance because the definition appears twice.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Okay, um, I'd like to add what Chris outlined to the agenda.
Well, it's actually in the zoning text amendment though, right? Is that what I heard?
Correct, yes, it will be a zoning text.
So I don't think we need an amendment.
Okay, so it's not a individual item that's going to be part of the zoning text amendment text.
There's two separate sections, that's what I understand.
Correct.
Chapter, chapter ten is the bigger one we're going to have a discussion on at a separate meeting. I think what I heard, Chris, is there's just a definition.
There is a definition of private kennel in the zoning ordinance that would also need to be amended.
And then when we have the other discussion, if any changes there affect that, we can still have time to change the definition part.
Correct.
Okay, so that'd fall under the zoning text amendment?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Saying no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item G two.
Personnel committee appointment. There is currently a vacancy on the city personnel committee. This committee reviews matters relating to personnel policies and practices, compensation benefits, labor relations and collective bargaining, employee relations, staffing and organizational structure, and advises the council on these issues. This committee is composed of two council members and meets as necessary. Mayor Voss is the current member of the committee. Staff request council consider appointment of another council member to fill this vacancy.
Take one clarification, the committee is more than just two council members, it's yourself and then whatever department head is involved, so, okay. Right, so interest in being on the personnel committee? You expressed, you expressed interest before, you want?
I'd be happy to be on it, yes. I'd be happy to be on it, yes.
Tim, Brian?
I don't mind volunteering, but as I'm on finance, I would hate to, seeing as some of the subjects that we discussed at the planning or finance meeting was, some of them were essentially the same subjects.
Yeah, there's crossover there, so.
I, I don't think it, it'd be best to have more opinions than just mine.
No, I'm good with it.
Then I'm gonna move to appoint Suzanne to the personnel committee. Is there a second?
One second.
Discussion.
I'd just like to know when you guys, when you...
It's just whenever it's needed, so. We've had two meetings so far?
Two meetings, correct.
Both, both personnel issues, yeah, definitely, so. So, it's not expected to be often, and it's flexible. It's whenever we meet during the day with staff, so. Any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item G three.
City council vacancy department. Councilmember Shelley Beck submitted her letter of resignation on Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Beck's term of office expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The resignation was accepted by city council at a special meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the seat declared vacant by Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-two. Council was briefed by the city attorney on the requirements for a special election. As the city does not have an ordinance stating that a special election shall be held to fill a vacancy prior to the next general election, a special election for this seat cannot be held in this election year. The special election will be on the ballot the next city election on November the eighth, twenty twenty-two. That election will have the mayor and the two sitting member seats that will be up for election on the ballot. On the same ballot, but as a separate item, will be the special election for the seat of the remaining two years of Ms. Beck's term. That means that two council members will be elected to four-year and one council member to a two-year term. This will keep the council members' terms staggered for each election cycle. As over two years remain on Councilmember Beck's term and the city cannot hold a special election until November the eighth, twenty twenty-two, council needs to make an appointment to fill this vacancy. The appointment will be for a term up to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or no later than the first regular council meeting in January, twenty twenty-three. The city attorney will review any date options for officially setting the candidate elected at the special election. At the special meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, council discussed options for filling the vacancy and moved to advertise the position, request letters of intent to file with resumes from eligible candidates, and review the applications at the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, regular city council meeting. The deadline for filing was three P M. on Friday, August the twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Applications received by or before the deadline were sent under separate cover for council review. Council will discuss the applications tonight and decide on the process for selection and a date for interviews at the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting. Listed in order, they were received, the following candidates have filed for the appointment of a temporary council seat vacated by previous council member Shelley Beck. Oscar Granquist, in your package, listed as Bill Home, with the name is Terry Home, Dan Dobbs, Randy Plaissants, Tanner Balphony, Wanda McLaren, Kurt Rebeline, Jim Smith, and Kevin Lewis. Staff recommends that city council provide direction to staff as to the process council prefers for candidate selection interviews. One option for the interview selection is each council member would vote for their top three candidates by ballot vote. The city administrator could then tabulate the votes to determine the candidates to be interviewed. Ties can be considered as an approval for an interview. Before you, you have a sheet with boxes on it that have each council member's name. If this is the method you prefer, we can vote for the top three that you would like to see on the interview panel. At the tabulation of votes, if this process is the one chosen, city council could call a special meeting for next Monday, Sep., August the third, to conduct the interviews and vote on the appointee.
I don't believe it was August third.
August thirtieth.
So, obviously, there's only four ballots. And the top three is the intent that we bring back for interviews. What if there's a tie for that third spot?
In the event of the tie, I would recommend we do four interviews then.
That's an easy answer. All good with that?
When are the interviews gonna be? The thirtieth? No, we're voting on the thirtieth.
We, we would recommend the interviews be on the thirtieth at a special meeting after the interviews were conducted. Then the city could actually take action at the special meeting to make the appointment.
So, everything on the thirtieth?
That's, that, that's the proposal I'm giving at this time.
We don't have to. I mean, you could set it for another night. Might as well do it the same night, yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
So, would we give one, uh, one point per applicant?
No, I would just go ahead. Your, your, your top three choices, I'd just check the box with the name.
Okay.
Not ranked.
No, not ranked.
Just excellent.
Correct.
Okay, that's where I was.
Correct. Your, your top three preferences is based on your view of the applications.
We'll do it now and pass it to you. Is that it? And then how we've done it in the past is when Jack announces, um, the, the top three or four, then we should make a motion to bring these back for interview on that date. That's how we've done it in the past. Need a drum roll?
Jeopardy music.
What's that?
Jeopardy music. Okay, the, there's one tie, so the, the four that will be selected for interviews are Wanda McLaren, Tanner Balphony, Randy Plaissants, and Dan Dobbs.
Okay. Someone wanna make a motion to invite these four back?
Make a motion to invite Dan Dobbs, Randy Plaissants, Tanner Balphony, and Wanda McLaren to a special meeting that will be called for August thirtieth for interview.
Is there a second? Motion made in second. Discussion. I wanna say that it was great to see nine applicants for this one position. That shows there's a lot of interest. The, assuming that one of the four part of motion will be the selection, I hope everyone on this list is interested going forward. There will be an election here in a little over a year, so, so that's great. Thank you all for taking the time to submit and apply, and we'll see what happens next week.
And I guess as a reminder, if any applicants did not get selected for interviews, or if not selected upon interviews, that there is at least one chair open on the planning commission. And depending on how votes go, there could be two. So, if they are still interested in serving the city in some capacity, I would highly encourage those applicants to apply for planning and zoning.
Yep, and being on the committee, you started there, I started there, you know, it's, uh...
Tim started there.
That's right. It's a good, good way to...
Good education.
Good way to get education in the city too, so.
And the application date, deadline for that commission is September the fifteenth.
It was extended to September?
Yes, correct.
Because of what, what's going on here?
Yes.
So, okay. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to make one comment too, is maybe next time, if we, if this ever happens again, is maybe run it a little longer? It's Friday night, I got two calls after city hall was closed. You know, I know we gave them four days, but maybe next time, consider maybe, you know, two weeks instead of a week. So, but there were more applicants out there that wanted to sign up, so.
Okay. Okay, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
So, can I, can I bring something up on this vacancy? Um, there's a parks meeting in September. Shelley Beck's not here.
Right.
Are we gonna appoint somebody or somebody?
Well, my thought was that, reason why I did the personnel committee now is the fact that we likely wouldn't take the first per, the first job and deal with the city staff.
Right.
You know, so, so that's why I figured it'd come from one of us anyway. But the parks, you know, I thought we'd wait until after we make, fill, fill the council position and that might be a good start for that person too, so. Okay. Onto item G three. Oh, sorry, G four.
City council approved the advertisement for proposals for a broadband internet service plan at the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. This action is the culmination of discussions regarding the need for a plan for the expansion of internet service at the March fifteenth, April nineteenth, and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one E D A meetings, and the May third, twenty twenty-one council work meeting. The city request for proposals for the plan was sent to twenty consultants, as well as posted on the League of Minnesota City's website and the East Bethel website. The deadline for submissions is three P M. Thursday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The city received three responses to the request. The three respondents met the qualifications of the R F P, and two of the three have done work locally or in other locations in Minnesota. The firm that did not list a Minnesota client does have an office in Saint Paul and has performed extensive work in Iowa. City council approved the invitation of all three respondents to be interviewed. Council also discussed the use of a committee to perform the interview and evaluation. That committee could consist of at least two council members, two E D A members, and three to four others that are familiar with broadband internet systems and internet delivery infrastructure. Based on staff's previous experience with those that have technical and or knowledge of other aspects of expansion of existing systems, are two candidates that are recommended to compose the interview panel. One, Jana King, Economic Development Services of Roseville, Minnesota. Ms. King has a background in internet expansion and was part of the selection committee for the Isanti County's broadband plan. As Ms. King is a consultant though, there would be a charge for her time, and attached is an agreement should we wish to engage her services. Samantha Markman, an Oakwood County Regional Economic Development Director, is another candidate. Samantha has a broad background in this field and is her contact for internet matters at the county level. Samantha is also working to find a county or Z O staff member with specialized knowledge regarding the more technical aspects of the system extension that could accompany her as an advisor to the panel. Staff is still in the process of reaching out to two others who have experience relating to the technology side of system expansion. A proposal for the interviews would be to devote the entire September twentieth, twenty twenty-one E D A meeting date time to this matter. Should two council members who are also E D A members and two E D A members be on the panel, the E D A meeting would remain as scheduled. The D S C D would need to be rearranged to accommodate the interview panel. Should the city select two different council members than those currently serving on the E D A, the regular E D A meeting could be canceled, and the September twentieth date could be an interview committee meeting only. The E D A appointed Brian Bazanson and Catherine Landkrane to represent the E D A on the panel and endorsed the panel proposal at their August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. We would anticipate that up to forty-five minutes would be allocated for each presenter to allow time for presentations and questions from the panel. This meeting is proposed to begin at six P M. The day and week of September twentieth, twenty-one are recommended for the interviews, as those are the times that align with the schedules of those that may be involved in the meeting. Other options for the meeting could be discussed should alternate dates, panel members, or formats require consideration. Staff is requesting council to approve the proposal for two council members, two E D A members, and three technical advisors to compose the interview panel, and the date and time of September twentieth, twenty twenty-one be scheduled as the time for the interviews.
Jack, could I just clarify? Your request is to, for us to identify the two council members or to approve the panel?
To approve the panel and then identify two council members.
Okay, so I see three things first. First, we approve the, the fact, the structure of the panel, the new appointments, and then figure out a date.
Yeah.
Okay. So can I get a motion on the structure of the...
Make a motion to approve the structure of the panel for the broadband interviews.
For two council members, two E D A members, and three, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We have a structure. Now we need two council members. Interest?
I will.
Okay. I was gonna pick you anyway, so. Tim, are you interested? I'm only, okay, I'm only asking because then we gotta make an E D A meeting if one of us are there, so, because it'll be... Oh, no, we won't be a quorum.
No.
If just one of the two of us.
Only if you and Brian are selected to the panel will we have an E D A meeting. If not, it would be, we would have an E D A meeting, which would be the panel. But if we don't have both you and Brian, we just have a committee of none.
Okay, we can just be regular meeting, okay. You interested?
Yeah, I can do it.
I'll make a motion to appoint Suzanne and Brian as members of this interview panel.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now on to date and time. That's up to Brian and Suzanne at this point.
I, I would strongly encourage, if there's any way possible, we could stick to that Sep- September twentieth deadline. It is the regular scheduled meeting for the E D A. The two E D A members would be available. Two of the panels we've talked about would be available.
They are. Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, whether they're available.
They are.
Okay.
Okay, so it'd be September twentieth?
Correct.
As far as the time, uh, in, in the, up above it says meeting is proposed to begin at six P M. Recommendations, it's seven P M.
That time is very flexible.
We have a city council meeting that night, right?
No, we have...
Oh, no, that's the third. Never mind.
Do I have a motion? Do you have a motion on that? Well, I guess you don't have that motion because we can't vote on it.
I, I, I would think six P M. may be a better time, uh, in light that most of these consultants are gonna be traveling. The meeting could take up to two and a half hours.
The only challenge I would perceive, if one of these firms comes from south of cities or has traveled, you know, maybe have the fir, maybe the firm that's closest to us be the first one. So they can avoid some of the traffic coming up here, so. That's just my suggestion.
Or do we need to set the time tonight, or I suppose we have to advertise, don't we?
It's up to you two.
Six o'clock is fine with me.
Fine with me.
Let me ask the two E D A members, is six o'clock on the twentieth? Okay, just, just shake your head or nod. I wanna hear you talk.
You know, when you handle things tight, I'm afraid you're gonna kick me out of here.
I will now, because you didn't give me a yes or no answer, so. Does it work, six o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Catherine too, okay. Or not Catherine, one. Okay.
All right.
Six o'clock. Question I have is, this is not an official city meeting, right? Because there's no, um, so we don't have a need to have it as a public meeting? There's no requirement, Chris? Or is there a requirement?
Well, if it's an official meeting of the E D A, it should be known.
No, it won't be.
It won't be now. If Steve and Brian were the appointees, it would be an official meeting.
We would have formed a quorum at E D A if I was there.
Okay, uh, then it would be discretionary.
Okay, so that's discretionary. So now I, I just wanna know what the options are. Now the question is, do we, do you have this open to the public, so? Because we don't have to. And I, I'm, I'm just gonna revert to Brian and Suzanne, so I, I don't have a problem with it, so. I don't know why we wouldn't.
No, I don't either. I thought, I mean...
But we won't be broadcasting it, right? So. So.
We'll record it in case there's any need to have any record of it.
Okay.
But we won't be broadcasting.
Okay. So, it's open to the public, then? So?
I'm a fan.
Yeah.
Either way, doesn't matter.
Okay. Is there anything else on this?
That's it, on that part of it.
All right. On to item G five.
Seven G five is really the second part of this. It's the broadband panel committee selection. City council will discuss the composition of an interview panel for the broadband consultant selection. Members will be proposed as two from city council, two from the EDA, and three technical advisors to compose the panel in the date and time of September twentieth, 2021, at six P M. as the schedule for the interviews. Based on staff's previous experience with those that have technical and/or knowledge of other aspects of expansion of his existing systems, is a local consultant that we recommend as a member of the interview panel. Jana King, Economic Development Services of Rosedale, Roseville, Minnesota, has a background in internet expansion and was part of the selection and development committee for Isani's County's broadband plan. Mrs. King is a consultant, and there would be a charge for her time. Attached is an agreement should we wish to engage her services. Per the agreement, estimated costs, by my recommendation, would not exceed one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage for this contract. That would include this meeting and a follow-up meeting if necessary. Only that time spent would be billed. Staff recommends city council engage the services of Jana King, Economic Development Services of Roseville, Minnesota, to assist the city in the selection of a consultant for the development of the broadband plan by approval of the attached contract and set an amount not to exceed one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage for her expenses.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement of services of Jana King, Economic Develop Services of Roseville, to assist the city in the selection of a consultant for the development of the broadband plan.
Second.
Motion made a second discussion.
Just pointing out that when you say estimated cost would not exceed fifteen hundred fifty plus mileage, that the, it's actually a hundred fifty-five an hour plus mileage, so that if, it may not be that amount.
Yeah, it just depends. We may not even need her for a second meeting. Maybe just be one meeting, so it could be half that amount or less.
Yeah, so I'll just.
That's just a not exceeding amount.
Yep, just wanna point that out.
And then, this would be out of the EDA budget?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's a fair price, because I've talked to consultants who charge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item G six.
Setting speed limit on Edmar Lane. In June 2020, the city received a petition from twenty-one of the thirty-four residents on Edmar Lane, west of Vicker Street, requesting the posting of this road to a twenty mile per hour speed limit. The current speed limit is thirty miles per hour. On July thirteenth, 2020, the city placed a radar speed display unit on Edmar Lane to gather speed and traffic count data. From June thirteenth through nineteenth, the westbound traffic was counted. There was an average of five hundred and fifty-six vehicles recorded at this location with an average speed of eighteen miles per hour. From July twentieth through July twenty-fourth, the eastbound traffic was monitored. There was an average of two hundred and sixty-six vehicles counted at this site with the average speed of fifteen miles per hour. The September fourteenth, 2020 meeting, city council approved leaving the speed limit at the current thirty mile per hour posting, and have staff contact the parcel delivery companies, ISD, nine eleven, and garbage haulers regarding numerous complaints of speeding. Present this matter to the attention of their drivers and educate them on the importance of abiding by the speed limits in the city. Minnesota Statute one sixty-nine point one four addresses lawful speed limits for municipalities. Subsection seven's limits speed to twenty-five miles per hour in residential roadways if adopted by the road authority having jurisdiction over this street. Speed limits can be set below twenty-five miles per hour, but require special studies related to traffic engineering, safety, and traffic analysis. Should speed limits be lowered to twenty miles per hour without the required speed studies, speed limits would default to the statutory classifications for traffic violation and other matters of law enforcement. Staff received a refiling of the 2020 petition from Edmar Lane residents on June ninth, 2021, to request the lowering of the speed limit on the street from thirty to twenty miles per hour. This request was discussed at the July sixth, 2021 work meeting, and city council is in support of the proposal. As no speed data was previously collected on the western segment of Edmar Lane, the city placed radar units at two locations between thirty-five, thirty-four, and thirty-four, twenty-six Edmar Lane to monitor speeds in both the east and westbound lanes for week-long periods. There was little difference in this data as compared to the information obtained in July 2020 for the eastern segment of the street. The speed indication display was not activated in the data collection that was done in 2021. City council is requested to approve the reduction of the speed limit on Edmar Lane to twenty miles per hour. The anticipated cost of the signage for the whole segment of the street, we discussed previously, would be ten signs at approximately sixty dollars per piece. The piece of the total cost would be around six hundred dollars.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reduction of the speed limit on Edmar Lane to twenty miles per hour.
A second.
Discussion. Did, I'm sorry, did you say twenty or twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty.
That's what it says.
That's what came out of the work meeting that we discussed.
Yep, yep, I just wanted to clarify, so. Discussion.
Well, I just wanna say, every time I drive down there, I'm seated thirty miles an hour speed limit, and I look at my speedometer, and I'm usually going fifteen to twenty. I mean, I can't imagine driving any.
Well, when you look at this graph, there was three drivers that went sixty miles an hour in that short stretch.
We think those were ATVs.
Okay, let's, that's a discussion for another meeting now.
Should go to University Avenue.
Oh, that's crazy.
Mayor and council members, I have a question about that. Is there any, do the graphs constitute the speed reports, or is there a separate study or anything?
No, the speed study would have to be done by essentially a traffic engineer.
So, this would be approving the formal speed study?
No, this would be approving lowering the speed limit to twenty miles an hour. I did put that in there, though, that in the case if there were any citations written in matters of speeding tickets or law enforcement, the street would revert back to the thirty mile per hour speed limit.
Which, it would be the council's province to lower it to twenty-five. If the council were interested in having an enforceable speed limit of twenty miles an hour, it's going to take a study by an engineer to determine that, so it would be my recommendation if the goal is to reduce the speed limit, to lower it to twenty-five rather than twenty.
And we had that whole kind of scenario discussion about what would happen, and I think consensus was, we understand that to lower it to twenty would need that speed study, and we'd have to do that to support enforcing a ticket that was written.
Okay.
And so, I think probably the easiest thing to say is, we're aware of that.
I just wanted to.
No, I appreciate the legal perspective. We kinda know what we're getting into, but I think that's the strategy right now, so. Okay, any discussion? Further discussion? Would like to revisit this at some point about other roads in the city that are similar to Edmar, have the same dynamics and construction and everything, so. Okay, no further discussion. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Staff report.
I have nothing else to add tonight.
Counsel report, Brian.
I guess two things. One, no meetings happened on Thursday. Jack and I have a Highway sixty-five coalition meeting to attend, so it doesn't get canceled.
It was canceled.
It was?
They sent the email out today.
Oh, I haven't seen that one, so. Okay, well, there won't be a Highway sixty-five coalition meeting on Thursday. Other thing I just wanna address, on the August thirtieth meeting, do we need to establish a time, and do we need to call the meeting officially?
There's, we can call it officially, and we do need to establish a time. The mayor can call a special meeting, or it can be the notification of two council members, but I think if we vote on this and just call the special meeting by council vote, we'll provide all the proper notifications, and I think that would be the best way to do this.
I actually thought it was in the motion, but.
A time?
Yeah.
I don't recall if it was a specific time. I know the date was in the motion.
Yeah, the time was not in the motion, and the motion was for a meeting to be called on August thirtieth, because I know that we would have to call.
And I can do that right now, correct?
Correct.
I'll call a special meeting for Monday, August thirtieth, at seven P M. for the purchase, the purpose of interviewing prospective city council candidates.
Did you say seven?
Seven P M. Is that okay with everyone?
Do you need a motion or anything on that?
No.
You don't have to have one.
Didn't I say that in the motion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said seven o'clock, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but.
Tim seconds. Discussion. Okay. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, and otherwise, summer's wrapping up, get out. I'd say enjoy the lakes if they haven't dried up. So, careful with fire, check on your neighbors. That's all I have.
Okay, Tim.
The fire department this morning, we had, the firefighters had CPR refresher, and just like to remind everybody that September twenty-seventh is their open house from five to seven thirty at Station One. That's all I've got.
Can you say a date again, Tim?
September twenty-seventh, we have a council meeting that night, too.
Okay.
What time was it?
Five to seven thirty.
Okay. Suzanne?
I have nothing.
Couple things, actually, just one thing. The, on the water restrictions. Jack, has anything changed? I thought I saw that Anoka County was included in additional water restrictions from the DNR.
I haven't received any notification on that. I can check tomorrow, though.
Okay, I thought I saw an article in the paper about it, but maybe I read it wrong, but maybe they're following up on what we did a couple meetings ago, so, okay. And then, last week, there was a East Bethel Chamber of Commerce meeting at Minnesota Fresh Farms, which was attended while there was a legislative update. Our local state rep and county commissioner were there. It was a representative from Congressman Emmer's office, so. It's an interesting morning discussion, so. And that is all I have. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.